Here.
Okay, and Travis is excuse straight. Okay. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's an agenda. Any additions, corrections?
You do have an updated Treasury report. We did have a check that we had to void. So I had to remove that from the expenditure. So your Treasury report just had one little change on it.
Anything else? Need a motion to approve that with that correction?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Okay, public input. This is time for anybody wishes to talk about something that isn't on the agenda. You have five minutes. Right?
What?
Nothing. I just wonder, wasn't it five minutes?
No.
I've never said that before, so I didn't know for sure.
Oh, come on.
Okay, moving on. Presentation of the B.E. Lisbon Award.
We had the contest for the B. Lisbon, and the winners were Casey and Louie Croft. They are going to renovate the Budget Lines building that they own, once Budget Lines has moved to their new location. And I was supposed to have a big check from Joe, but I didn't get that. But we still would like them to come up.
It's not called Budget Lines, it's called the headquarters.
The headquarters. Now you guys heard it from the headquarters.
All right.
So, Pearl, if you can stand, or if you can come down here, whatever you prefer to do.
You guys come up here.
I'll come up there.
Oh. That way Margaret has a hard time taking a picture. She'll figure it out. Okay, what are you gonna do?
I'm just gonna stand by you and smile.
I don't mean that. What are you gonna do with the building?
She'll explain what she's gonna do with the building, yes.
Um, so I have a photography business.
Oh, you are?
And I'm going to have a studio in there, but then also have an area for some retail.
Good. And what are you gonna do with the front windows?
Um, we're gonna make the windows bigger and-
I think that box is still in there.
Take the siding off and, yeah.
Yeah, because they always went to the ground, you know?
Yeah, yeah, because you were in that.
Yeah. Okay, well, good for you guys.
You want Doug? Okay.
If they're gonna be downtown.
Oh, yeah, well, it's-
And I'm gonna be sitting on the chair, so.
According to them, it's their headquarters.
Headquarters.
That's cute, though.
Headshots, headquarters?
That'll be cute, so.
Can you get us all?
Good luck.
First camera.
I am. I seen if anybody had any money for him.
Girl, smile!
Yes, ma'am, look at the camera.
Well, thanks.
Good for you guys.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And are you still on the CDD?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Again, we want to thank you for-
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we are very excited. Yeah. Kind of Budget Lines is just out of there. We went down for the first time on Friday and kind of started our plan and a lot of things ahead of us, but it'll be good as well.
Good for you.
Thank you again.
Congrats!
Thank you.
He's not very excited, is he? Okay, we'll see him. History Center door.
We talked about this at the last meeting and decided to table it. Travis has been working on getting some more information on that, but I did get a call from Historic Preservation. They asked if we would delay it again because they have received that grant and they have a historic building specialist that's coming to look at that wall and the library and as well as the barns. Travis talked to Eric, and the reason that Eric was, they wanted to get it done is because it does leak a lot of cold air, so they're having higher heating bills. So we really don't want to prolong it too awful much, but they asked me to present tonight to ask for if you guys would consider tabling it until after the other inspection is done by the historic.
When is that?
Supposed to be in December.
December? That they're coming?
Supposed to come this whole-
Oh, that's this December. Duh. Okay.
So I told them I would ask for your input on what you guys wanted to do.
Well, what did Eric want to do? Did he want to, was he okay with us tabling it until after the inspection, or did he want it?
I didn't get that opinion from him, that he was okay with it. So it does leak a lot of-
Yeah.
A lot of cold air.
And they'll be closed quite a while during, now.
During December?
You know, they'll close.
Is there a way that we could, like, keep it up, or?
I mean, I could put insulation. They've got the trim off of it, so we could temporarily put some insulation around the outside. The inside, but the outside of the door frame, try to help that, if you guys would like to wait. I mean, we could look at plaques, putting plastic up on it, too, like you do for your windows.
Yeah.
But just, they would have to be closed because they do need that second exit for-
Emergency purpose.
Isn't there an exit in the very back?
They've got, they've got stuff in front of that door.
So are they closed from now until after the holidays? They can't possibly be because they have something going on for the holidays.
It doesn't close till 15th or 16th or something.
Yeah, next weekend they have events.
So.
I mean, how hard would it be to move the stuff out back and then just close this one off for, for a time being, so they have a second exit?
I mean, I'd have to talk to them. I don't, because I was in there for five minutes to look at the door.
They can hang a blanket up there like we did last year.
Okay, so you, the opinion is for, to wait until after that inspection? Okay.
Okay, moving on. Approval of code to rebuild sewer pump.
I'll let Travis take this one.
So we put this on here. Basically, I wanted to explain that this was a sewer plant. It wasn't part of the lift station that we spent the money on to rebuild. We have three pumps that are in circulation that run 24/7 down there. What we normally do is take one pump out and recircu-, you know, it'll stay on our shelf as, just in case one goes bad. Well, that pump that we had sitting on our shelf was one that they rebuilt, and when they put that in-
Oh, dear.
It sealed, one of the seals failed just from sitting. It's a warranty deal. It's, they're taking care of it. But this other pump that we need to fix was the one that when we were doing our inspection and our yearly maintenance on it, we realized that this one was worn and bad, too, so we gotta get this one fixed.
So even though it's under my $5,000 max that I can approve, we still just wanted to bring to your attention and explain to you so people aren't confused that we just replaced pumps, but those were at the lift station, not for different ones. So we just wanted to clarify that with you guys.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Okay, approval of final payment for housing rehab in the amount of $5,888.40.
We approved a big chunk of this at the last meeting, and now they have finished the rehab project, so we're ready to finalize it and submit our request for reimbursement.
Need a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Possible second reading of ordinance 062019 Parking Regulations.
We approved the first reading at the last meeting with the changes that we made where we eliminated the number 19, and then we added no overnight parking.
Move to approve second reading.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Uh, reset a public hearing for water and sewer rates increase in, to December 23rd, 2019.
Motion to approve the reset of the date.
Second.
Okay, and, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reset public hearing for budget amendment to December 23rd.
This was my fault, sorry. We approved the budget amendment at the last meeting, but we did not open and close the public hearing. I didn't catch it. My bad. I'm sorry. So we have to rehold the public hearing and open and close it and approve it at the 23rd.
All right. Motion to set the public hearing for the 23rd.
See what happens when we try to go so fast?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Reset.
No.
Just set.
No, set public hearing for Gillette Lane Trail project for December 23rd.
Travis and Dave and I talked at the last, after the last meeting, and it's a real slow time for construction companies right now, so Dave thought that it might be a good time to go out to rebid the Gillette Trail project. That way, people can get it on their schedule and be able to start right away in the spring. So we're gonna give it a shot. So we just need to, he's got the bids out there to the different companies, and we just need to set a public hearing to go over that. We will be setting it for the 23rd.
Okay.
Motion to set it for the 23rd.
Second.
The motion is second. Is this on the, tell me where it's going.
From Main Street to Highway to Business 30 along Gillette, right by the nursing home.
The new sidewalk. The new sidewalk.
Yeah, okay.
Transized.
Uh, let's see, we already did that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 New business capital improvement plan.
I did send out a packet to all of you guys this last week. Hopefully, you all got it. It's all the information that I've gotten from all the different departments and the different commissions or boards with the information on their wish lists. I told them to just put everything, you know, and then you guys would rank them according to your highest priority. And then, once we get those, we can start gathering information on the cost of the projects, how they could be funded and that. So if you look for that in the mail, look for the sheet with the priority, and get that to me as soon as you can, so I can, we can start moving. It's just something that we need to do in conjunction with the new budget, which is coming real fast, so I would like to, our highest priority ones, I would like to get those in the next budget, if we need to put any of them in the next budget. Otherwise, they'll be sometime in the next five to 10 years.
I'm sure you'll do a good job on that. Okay.
Did anybody not get theirs? Everybody got it?
I never looked.
I don't know if I sent one to you or not.
That's okay. I'll find it. Always got it in the mail?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't get one of those. We never get any mail. That's okay. I'll, that's okay.
We will start on that discussion on that again at the next meeting.
Okay, any correspondence?
I just had one letter from a resident that, not a resident, I guess he's a Mount Vernon resident, that wanted to thank Lisbon for the police department and the fire department and ambulance for helping them. So he just wanted you guys to know that he appreciates that, and they did a great job.
Which they do. Okay. City engineer report.
Dave is not here tonight. He had another obligation, but I'm sure Travis will cover whatever he needed to.
Okay, Travis, you're up.
Pretty much, Dave and I, everything discussed. We're working on, you guys know about for now. The only thing we're working on in public works is we're going around with our leaf back still, but we're only concentrating on our storm intakes and the curb and gutter portion, so if people get upset, I mean, if there's a pile there, we can get it, we will, but it's not, we're not meant to be out picking up leaves.
Did we get all the leaves picked up?
We highlight, every day, when we go down the street, we highlight it on our actually city size map, and we go through, and if it takes us three days to get through the town or three weeks, I mean, it's down to, almost down to the minute, like where we were.
Yeah, the maps help Christina and I when we get calls, so we can look at the highlighted thing. It's like, no, we've already been down that street. You're gonna have to wait till the next time, but if, you know, if the guys do have time within that time period, they go back.
How long has it been taken?
It took us, this last time, just Main Street, to get from down and back, took us four and a half hours. So we're between Main Street and Washington.
I think she's talking about leaf pick-
Yeah, I am talking about leaf pickup.
Yeah, that, I'm just telling you, just that one street.
You're saying one street was four and a half hours?
Yeah, so it depends on the leaves. Earlier, in the fall, wasn't that long. You're, you're all of a week. And part of the problem is-
And it's three of you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's been taking at least four days to do this city.
Good idea, because that's a, I don't know now, but I mean, last year, did we even get them picked up last year? We didn't, did we?
Yeah, we did several times.
Then you have neighbors-
Last year was a little smoother, because they didn't come all at once.
Once, yeah, that's the problem, is it came all at once, and then they kind of froze, and when they freeze, that's just an aluminum impeller inside that, and it's not worth damaging the unit to run frozen like-
Ice through it, yeah.
So.
Well, good job, guys.
Neighbors park in front of other neighbors' piles. We document that, too. That way, if they call, we know, yeah, right, there was it. We couldn't get to it, we'll swing by, so.
Is there anything we could do to make it more efficient for you guys, or?
The only-
Sometimes they don't rake it out far enough. If we have three guys on, we can go closer to the sidewalk, but if we only have days that we have, like if Nate has to be helping him at the sewer plant, and we only have two guys on, that thing only reaches so far. So we did get a few people that were angry because we left a little row, but what we did is, when we had three guys, we came back. And we had a couple people that were nice enough to come out with their rake and rake it to us, but they just need to understand that it only reaches so far, so if their leaves are clear up to the sidewalk or past the sidewalk, sometimes we have to come back and get it.
And like in Washington, I mean, that's 25 feet between curb and sidewalk, so, I mean, we're there. And there's a lot of trees on that, too, so don't get me wrong, I understand, but sometimes it's easier for them, instead of putting all their leaves in a one big pile, it's easier if they would do a row.
A row, yeah.
All the way down their curb, because then we can set and go, but like you said, no, I, we, we've got it down pretty, as smooth as we can, I mean.
What about from a city council standpoint, is there anything that we could do for you need that would make it more efficient?
Have you got rakes?
I was gonna say volunteer help. I knew he was going to.
We've, we've talked about a headset, just so the driver can talk to the guy in the back of the leaf machine. Just when there's two guys, it's easier. That, I know they would appreciate that. The other thing is, I, I mean, that's, I was gonna look with 4L, when we dump the leaves, the top of the box doesn't open, so if you overfill it, you're actually, they're trying to dig it out. If we can find a way to make that hinge, that would speed that process up, but I mean, we've got, the back we have is fantastic. The truck that we have is, is good, I mean, so there's, it's just a manpower thing.
Well, have you looked into the headset thing? That sounds like a pretty good idea.
Well, it's expensive.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
What'd they say it was? Do you remember? It was, it was pretty pricey, so.
Why?
It's not just a walkie-talkie set or something?
No, because it's gotta be noise, I mean, because of the, you're sitting right by the diesel engine here.
Yeah, but I mean, you can buy-
It would probably be a good idea for the person sitting out there, anyway, because it's loud.
Just to have.
I mean, you can buy those noise-canceling headsets for a few hundred bucks.
Frequency, too.
So how much was it?
I can't remember. I don't, I don't want to throw a number out there.
Seems like it was 1,600, 1,700 or something like that.
Yeah, and I don't want to-
Wow, okay.
How much, you say?
1,600 or 1,700 dollars.
Oh, my.
Is that one of the things that you put in your budget?
Yeah, it's, it was one that we've talked about in the budget. I did not put it on my-
You didn't put it on your CIP?
No.
We can add it to the CIP.
Does any, is there any other alternative communication methods that are commonly used for this kind of work? Is there a keypad, a lever, a?
No, because I thought about a horn system.
Flags?
I said, when there's three guys, it's, it's generally, it's, it's not that, that big of a deal, because a guy standing out, the guy driving can see him a lot easier.
Can see, and you can do the, yeah.
Yeah, and you don't have to be so precise. It's just, you know, when there's only two of them going, like this, we, you know, we had brush pickup and leaf pickup run coincide, so two of us were doing one, and the other two were doing the other, so.
I would say that if you, I don't know how loud it is, but if you think it is something that could damage one of the workers, something like that, we probably should think about sooner rather than later, because we wouldn't want to have that come back on us.
Well, they probably have the PPE, but they don't have, there's no communication.
So you do have hearing protection out there?
Yeah, 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 we got hearing protection.
Just not communication.
We just have no communication.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you guys need to take care of that sometime next year. Anything else? Okay. Amy, do you have a report?
Okay.
And anything from the fire department?
Nope.
Your report?
Hi, just have a couple of things. Just wanted to thank everybody who attended Pearl's reception yesterday. I think we had a good time.
Sure did.
And thank her again for all of her service. Remind everybody that Holiday Jubilee is this Saturday. They will be having the parade at 3 o'clock. There is activities, a breakfast at the History Center, events at Southeastland and at the Library and Heritage Hall. And again, to make sure you mark your calendar, for January 16th, we will be having the public meeting, or open house, to go over our future land use plan, the sports complex, and the nature park. EC cog's gonna be here to facilitate the event.
Who is?
EC cog. Chad. I will be posting it as a council meeting, a Park and Rec meeting, and a planning and zoning meeting, just so everybody that's gonna be here. And our civil engineers will be here to answer any questions, so it's gonna be a good event. We'll be putting an ad in the paper for a couple weeks, and also sending out invitations in the mail to all the residents, so we can get as much input as we, as we can.
I, I've been out of for a while, but I would think you'll have a big crowd. I have so many people ask me stuff, and I don't even know what's going on. Yeah, so.
That's good. That's why we're having it.
Yeah, good idea.
That's all I have.
Do you want to talk to them about the tree?
Okay, mayor's report?
Oh, one more thing, the downtown tree.
Yeah.
Okay, the, Travis and I wanted to talk to you about the tree that's at the gazebo downtown. It's an evergreen tree that was planted years ago, but it's not the kind of evergreen tree that's hardy enough to really do anything with. It had a shrub tree that was growing up the middle of it. We removed that shrub tree, and it looks like a Charlie Brown Christmas tree now. What we would like to do is remove that tree and use funds out of the next tree grant to plant a new hardy blue spruce, or maybe John can recommend a different type of evergreen or spruce, so we can get it growing, so it'll be there in the future.
And we can decorate it.
Something that we can actually decorate and make presentable. We tried to put lights on it, and the, the leaves are so, not leaves, or branches, are so fine that they just sag down and all the lights slide right off, so there's not much we can do with it. We did go, I had Travis go get a real tree this year, and we put it inside the gazebo. It looks beautiful. So we can use it for the event this weekend. Park and Rec's gonna have a tree lighting and tree decorating activity, so we've got that ready to go, but, so that is our plan. I did check with some people to make sure it wasn't a memorial tree, but Pearl and Luanne both told me that it was just planted.
It was planted against the committee's wishes.
Okay, so, but we would like to, like I said, plant something that would suit the situation a little bit better.
But that wouldn't happen until spring, right?
No, probably not.
That's why we went with the other tree and-
That's why we got the other tree to make.
And it wasn't, I mean, it was a sucker tree growing up out of there, and it's not like we went and said, hey, we want to cut this off today. No, that blew over in one of the storms this summer. We cleaned it up, hoping that some new branches would sprout off, and nothing did sprout off. So I doubt there's gonna be any growth coming from this.
John, I think we missed the deadline for the spring tree grant, didn't we?
We've only been doing one a year now, instead of two.
Yeah, but they, I mean, well, they offer two, but the point is, I thought it was December 1 or-
That one's already gone in.
Yeah, we've already had one.
So the next opportunity would be the fall grant.
Yeah.
We don't want to wait that long necessarily.
Well, we can still-
We can just, we can just take it out of budget or something. As I say, why don't we just see how much, why don't you get some-
We have money left from this year's that wasn't used yet, so we, we have a little bit left there, but I think what we can do with next year's is we can switch out a, they've been pretty lenient with us, like if we, if we couldn't get a certain type of tree, they would let us get another one, so. I think we can figure it out somehow, and I have talked to Robert and Mary Ann and a few other people on the tree board.
Especially for something that, you know, the whole public's gonna be like, joy, wouldn't be like this. I, I feel like they're gonna be more inept to, to work with us, so.
So we probably want, probably want to do that in the spring, then.
Yeah.
Get that one cut down, spade it out of there, put one in.
Yep.
We're hoping to get as big as we can possibly get.
Yeah, spade in a good sized one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was the problem that we had, that this, I don't even know if we're supposed to plant one there, but anyway, when they planted it, got big, and guess what? It hit the gazebo. I mean, if it had gotten big and stuff like that. So that was a real.
Right, so let's look into it and get it scheduled through spring.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, my report, as Connie said, I was, I was, I can't, not supposed to cry. Doug gets mad when I cry. Anyway.
We don't care if Doug gets mad. You do whatever you need to do.
Anyway, I mean, a real nice welcome and everything. The food was great. I had never eaten Doug's baked beans, but they were out of this world. I, I got the recipe this morning.
Well, my husband liked them, too, so.
Yeah, I was surprised, but it was very, very nice. And then sad-
Made love.
Yeah.
They're made of love. It's the main ingredient.
Yeah.
She'll put that in a minute. Doug mixes baked beans with love.
Saturday night, we had an employee party, which was very nice, too. Yeah, we had a lot of fun, so I was able to go to both of them.
I was kinda tired this morning.
I was depressed because I didn't know about either thing.
You did?
Mm-mm.
Oh, that's too bad.
I handed out fires. As they figured it out.
It's a little late now.
And all we talked about, and that one was impeaching Doug.
Dang it, I missed all the good stuff.
Yeah, I wasn't talking.
It wasn't it? Yeah.
And I told them that they have to wait till he's actually mayor before-
Would that be a first?
I'm pretty sure Saturday night after the employee party that I talked about.
Yeah, very, very nice. And I want to thank everybody, all the residents of Lisbon, whether they like me or not. They've been great to work with, real great. And Connie, I've learned a lot from her. I never have figured out she really knows as much as she does, where she's just prepping me.
It's too late now.
Dang. But anyway, really enjoyed working with her. And I'll probably, I promised Margaret, if I decide to run for mayor again, she'd be the first to know. Don't, don't get shook up, Doug.
After we impeach Doug?
That'd be another eight years, I don't know. Okay, Doug, you're first.
No, nothing.
John?
Well, the Christmas Jubilee is coming up, the 14th, this Saturday, and there'll be a puppet show in Heritage Hall at 10 o'clock, and then a holiday movie at Southeastland at 1 o'clock. That's all I have.
I do have something. Which movie?
The Grinch.
I know somebody that, I don't-
The Grinch.
The Grinch.
Did we get Gillette Lane done? Were we gonna haul rock or have somebody haul rock? We never got that done.
The snow hit.
Are we gonna wait till spring, after spring?
I assume that's what they're gonna do. That's gonna be my suggestion if they ever get back.
This is north of Main Street?
The gravel park.
The gravel park, yeah.
The gravel park. The last thing I want to do is have the city pay to have a bunch of rock put down there, and then we run plows right on it. Don't get a chance to get it worked in, so.
All right, I'm done now.
Are you done? Stephanie?
Well, I know we touched on it last time about whether or not we're ready for, you know, Highway 30, but I just wanted to know if there was any kind of update or?
Dave is still working on it, so he asked them for their notes that they had to determine how they came up with the dollar amount, and they said they did not have any notes. It was just their engineers came up with a figure. So Dave is working, working with them on our behalf and Mount Vernon's behalf, so. He said he'll update us as soon as he hears back from them, but he didn't have anything as of today.
Okay.
You know, I don't know if that bypass is darker than Highway 30 when you come down that now or not, is it? Man.
Very much so.
I just thought maybe-
Who do we, who do we talk to about getting a light out there?
Out where?
Where Highway 30, where the bypass comes to 30.
We talked about this at the last meeting. I've already contacted the DOT. They said they did not have it in the plan, said we had to go to the county, so I did contact Lynn County, told them that, of the concern, and that residents are complaining, and they were supposed to be checking into it and get back to me, were supposed to be checking into it and get back to me, so I haven't heard anything yet, but they said that they didn't, and it wasn't their intent to, to put one there either, but they're gonna look into it now and that's what's been complaints.
Okay, so since we've, we've complained to the county and the state, if someone gets killed there, we're not responsible at all for that.
It's not in city limits anyway.
I mean, sooner or later it will be, I mean, but, and I mean, where you come up on the bypass, from, not bypass to, was that Adams? I don't know, it's Lisbon Road, isn't it, what it's called?
Lisbon Boulevard.
Lisbon Boulevard. When there's a car coming this way, there is no way, they're gonna have time to stop when somebody pulls out, because they're going 55 miles an hour.
We were just discussing that earlier at our earlier meeting and it is, it is bad. It comes up on you fast and you don't realize it and...
So right now it's in Lynn County's hands whether they're gonna put what they're, one